I would like to call to order the February 21st, 2022 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. Welcome everyone. It's good to have you with us tonight. First up is the approval or corrections of minutes. And commissioners, you all have a copy of those before you. Do I hear a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes and we move to approval of the agenda. You also have a copy of that before you as well. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda with changes on page 37, including a new planning and development item concerning ARPA weatherization contract. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes and we move to recognition and presentations. And first from the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District, we have Tammy Rimsburg with us to talk about awarded state recognitions.
Good evening. Before I start, you're going to hear the word conservation a lot. There was no other way to do it because of the names of everything, but just wanted to give you a warning. The North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts is a support organization of the 96th Conservation Districts in the state. Part of their mission is to promote and sponsor educational programs of all types relating to conservation, restoration, management, and proper use of soil and water and other natural resources in the state of North Carolina. As part of this mission, the association gives yearly awards to outstanding districts and educators in the field of conservation education. Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District was awarded the Conservation District of the Year at the association's annual meeting in January. We're honored to have received this award whose purpose is to recognize the outstanding conservation education efforts of our state's conservation districts. As we work alongside classroom teachers with our classes, conservation contests, and Envirothon competition, we strive to help create future citizens of our county who cherish our natural resources. We also work to educate landowners on the best ways to utilize those natural resources for the long term. We thank you for your continued support through the county budget. We hope to be adding additional contests next year so that we will allow all students K-12 to participate. We also got an inductee into the Hall of Fame, which you will hear more about momentarily. But along with the District of the Year Award, we also got our conservation teacher, Ms. Ashley Miller of Mount Pleasant Middle School. We got to share her with the people at the meeting. And she, after a two-year hold, was awarded the North Carolina Secondary Teacher of the Year at that meeting as well. And that award is to recognize outstanding conservation education efforts of our state teachers. Ashley is one of our best teachers in the district and we're very proud of her. And she is going to say something to you as well.
Um, hey Tammy, uh, thank y'all for allowing me to join personally. Um, I really appreciate being recognized, educating kids, and letting them know like why we should care about the environment and how it impacts everyone is really important. Uh, and Tammy and everyone at Soil and Water do a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to Ashley and to the district. That is quite, quite a high honor, which is not surprising to anybody in this room. We know what a tremendous job you do and we certainly appreciate it. And we move now to Planning and Development, recognition of Lloyd Quay for his service on the Town of Harrisburg Planning and Zoning Advisory Board and Board of Adjustment. And we're happy to have Susie Morris to make that recognition.
This is Mr. Quay. Good evening. Tonight, we are recognizing Mr. Lloyd Quay Jr. for his service to the citizens of Cabarrus County as the extraterritorial jurisdiction member for the Harrisburg Planning and Zoning Advisory Board and Board of Adjustment. In 1997, Mr. Quay was asked if he would serve on the Harrisburg Planning and Zoning Board. As a lifelong resident of the area, interested in how the town was developing and the challenges that same development was presenting, he gladly accepted the invitation. He was appointed by the Board of Commissioners on June 21st, 1997, and continued to serve until June 30th, 2021. For those of you that like numbers, that equates to 288 monthly meetings, seven reappointments by the Board of Commissioners, and 24 years of service. Mr. Quay has been part of the consideration of too many cases and projects to list, but some you may recognize are the Harrisburg Town Center, Brookdale, Saddle Creek, Schoolhouse Commons, and the latest Farmington. He has also been a part of some of the longest meetings for the Harrisburg Planning and Zoning Board as the community struggled with how, where, and when to grow. One meeting in particular stands out. It started at 7:00 PM and the public hearing for the final case on the agenda that night was finally continued at 2:15 AM. I can attest to that and so can Mr. Cook because we were both at that meeting. Mr. Quay served in various leadership positions over the years. He served in the peer elected positions of Chair of the Board of Adjustment for over 10 years and as Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board for multiple terms. Mr. Quay has seen a lot of changes over the years. Town Hall has expanded from the small building at the corner of 49 and Morehead to the new facility in Town Center. The population of the town grew, increasing over 10,000 residents in 10 years to close to 19,000 in 2020. As a member of the Board, Mr. Quay had a front row seat to the town's transition from contracted staff for services like planning, zoning, enforcement, and engineering to full-time staffing for each of those functions. Mr. Quay has been a tremendous asset to the Advisory Board and to the Board of Adjustment. He was always willing to volunteer his time and talent beyond the regular monthly meetings by serving on committees. He was part of the original drafting of the Unified Development Ordinance. He served on the Steering Committee for the Harrisburg Land Use Plan Update in 2008 and again in 2018. He contributed to the first bike and ped transportation plan for the town. And most recently, he served on the UDO Rewrite Committee. Mr. Quay's knowledge, expertise, and commitment to the Harrisburg Planning and Zoning Advisory Board and to the Board of Adjustment, along with his witty sense of humor and willingness to serve, will be greatly missed. Please join me in thanking Mr. Quay for his service and wishing him all the best as he finds new ways to spend his evenings on the third Tuesday of the month.
Thank you very much. And as all of y'all know, that serving on a board like I did, you're not alone. You serve with people. And I had the privilege throughout the years of serving with a lot of excellent people that came with their agenda or their desire to show up and do the job. And we actually got along very well, which surprised me. It was a very fortunate experience that I had, that we, there was not a lot of acrimony or anything like that. We came in to do the job and we did that. So it was a good experience and I left it in good hands. And I just appreciate the confidence that y'all put in me and keeping sitting me there. And as she was reading all the stuff that I've been involved in, it was like, you know, I really, was I really involved in that much stuff? And I guess over 24 years, I guess I was. But thank you very much. And I must give credit. There's a person there that when I came, was there. And when I've left, he's there and has kept us straight more times than I can count. That's Rich Cook. And thank you, Rich, for helping us the many times you did. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Quay. I think 24 years and 288 meetings. And I really think you ought to get credit for four or five meetings for that 2:00 AM one. So we're going to say close to 300 meetings. But thank you for your service to Harrisburg and to the people of Cabarrus County. We celebrate your willingness to stay for 24 years in that job. So sincere appreciation on behalf of the entire board. Thank you. Okay, we move now to, from Department of Human Services, Social Worker Appreciation Month. And we have Anthony Hodges and Sharon Shuneman with us for that recognition. And I think they're both virtual.
Good evening, commissioners. We want to thank you for allowing us to present the proclamation tonight on behalf of our 122 social workers, supervisors, and appropriate managers that work in child welfare and adult and aging service, DHS, as well as those social workers that work in their, with their community partners. So I want to read the first half of the proclamation, then Sharon is going to finish it up for us. So we'll go ahead and start. Whereas the social work profession for decades has been dedicated to improving well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us, particularly during the global pandemic during the last two years. And whereas this year's Social Work Month theme, "The Time Is Right for Social Work", embodies how more people are entering the field because the life-affirming services that social workers provide are needed more than ever, and how social workers rose to meet some of the nation's most pressing challenges of our lifetimes, the COVID-19 pandemic, political divisiveness, economic uncertainty, and other crises. And whereas social workers are the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States and work daily to help people, whether in person or remotely, overcome substance use, disorders, and mental illnesses such as isolation, depression, and anxiety. And whereas, social workers have always helped people overcome issues such as death and grief, and helped people and communities recover from, recover from increasing natural disasters such as fires, hurricanes, and earthquakes while working in shelters and disaster recovery efforts. And whereas, social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all people, no matter their race, sexual identity, gender, gender expression, culture, or religion. And...
And whereas, the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing careers with more than 700,000 social workers in the United States and nearly 3 million worldwide. Social workers are everywhere. People need help navigating through life challenges. They contribute to interdisciplinary care teams in schools, hospitals, mental health centers, nonprofit corporations, the military, and in local, state, and federal government. And whereas, the nation needs more social workers as it continues to deal with entrenched problems that have stressed our society, including systemic racism and the coronavirus pandemic. The United States is also experiencing one of the worst economic downturns since the Great Depression. Social workers are on the front lines as essential workers, helping people overcome these crises. And whereas, social workers have continued to push for changes that have made our society a better place to live, including a livable wage, improved workplace safety, and social safety net programs that help ameliorate poverty, hunger, and homelessness. And whereas, social workers possess the necessary expertise to assist our nation in some of its most demanding concerns, including the health and well-being, not only during the pandemic, but at all times, ensuring equal rights, improved health care, and mental health care for all, and immigration reform. And whereas, social workers work in all facets of our society to meet people no matter their circumstances and empower them to live their fullest potential. And now, therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by Cabarrus County social workers, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners proclaim the month of March 2022 a National Social Work Month, and call upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers in Cabarrus County in celebration and support of the social work profession. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon and Anthony. And commissioners, do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just like to say that this is greatly deserved. Our social workers get involved in situations that most of us could not imagine, and they do it day in and day out. And we certainly appreciate the work that you do on behalf of the people of Cabarrus County. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to informal public comments. Oh, I skipped the, I skipped the biggest part. Yes. Next, item four from Human Resources, recognition of Deputy County Manager Jonathan Marshall on his retirement. And I'll turn the mic over to County Manager Mike Downs.
Okay, just 34 years ago, Jonathan started with the county in, in 1988, right? 87, 88?
1988.
That's right, yeah. So the first 22 years of that, Jonathan spent time as a planner, a senior planner, the Commerce Director, the Director of Planning and Development. He took a short stint at the Director of Asset and Infrastructure Management, and then back again. And then ultimately, he has spent the last 11 years as the deputy manager. Jonathan, as Mr. Quay, he, he has sat through plenty of planning and zoning meetings over the year. I would hate to guess the numbers, but if it was a subdivision, a plat, a rezoning, a redo of an ordinance, in fact, if you subdivided or purchased property during the, during the 80s and the 90s, you have Jonathan's autograph on your, on your plat or on your deed there. So he has, he has led the way as Cabarrus County from a rural community to a thriving, growing community. And he's been the one there. He's attended, I would say, hundreds of meetings as well, if not more. And he's still, along with Susie and Kelly Siffert, are expert here. And in fact, if Kelly and Susie have an issue, they go to Jonathan for his historical perspective or his historic, historical knowledge. So Jonathan graduated from the University of Chapel, North Carolina Chapel Hill. He is a certified planner and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. He is currently, his big job right now, his big responsibility right now, is he's the project manager at the Jackson Training School. He is the one, as Commissioner Chairman Morris led the efforts in the board to, to secure that property. Jonathan has taken over and been the, sort of the planner there and trying to get the state, the liaison between the county and the state. And that's not been an easy process. So it's, but we're well under our weight. We're hate that he's leaving before it's done because now he's passing it back on to me. So, but, so after 34 years, we're excited that he is moving on to that next phase of life. And I know he's going to enjoy that with his kids and future grandkids and golfing and his wife. So we are excited, a little jealous of that as well. But congratulations on 34 years. Well done. And, and thank you for everything that you've done. So.
Jonathan, you can, you can thank Commissioner Honeycutt for your retirement recognition here because I thought if I just skipped right on over that item and kept on going, it would not be effective. And she pointed out my, my error, but...
Didn't want to though.
Yeah, I feel the push.
Yeah.
Bet you do.
Yeah, but, you know, you know, on behalf of the board, and we certainly will give other board members an opportunity to speak if they would, if they would like, but sincerely appreciate your service to Cabarrus County. As I said during comments at, at your reception the other day, rather than choosing to bemoan the fact that you're leaving and encourage you not to, we're going to celebrate the fact that you stayed so long. And there are not too many people that, that stick it out for, for 34 years. And, and I was sitting here thinking as, as we were talking about Mr. Quay, I, I wonder if Jonathan has a tally of the number of meetings that he's attended. I, I think it would probably get up into the thousands. But we sincerely appreciate everything that you have done for us as commissioners. As I said before, you're one of the ones that tries best you can to make us look smart. And that's not always a very easy job. So we appreciate that. And I also wanted to mention that at Jonathan's reception on Friday, he was awarded the Order of the Longleaf Pine as well. And I wanted to read just a few comments about that. Since 1963, North Carolina's governors have reserved their highest honor, the Order of the Longleaf Pine Award, for persons who have made significant contributions to the state and their communities through their exemplary service and exceptional accomplishments. Persons named to the order become North Carolina ambassadors with their names and award dates recorded on a roster maintained by the Order of the Longleaf Pine Society. And, and that, that is an honor that you're truly deserving of. And, and of course, you know, it will be, your option is what comments you would like to make. But we have also learned that Jonathan knows the North Carolina toast that goes along with that. But, but, but thank you for, for all your years of service. And, and I'll open up the floor for any comments from other commissioners if you would like.
I would just say, I tried the opposite approach. I tried to point out to Jonathan all the people who had retired and then went and got another job. And you might as well just keep this job, but that didn't win either. And then I was also glad to hear Jonathan, that you and Mike did have some heated arguments and things because anytime I have ever been around you, you are one of the most calming people I know. So I've not seen that side of you. So I'm glad to know that you do have a little bit, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm learning. So you have fooled me for many, many years. But I do want to just thank you for your dedication and commitment and passion to this county and the citizens here. I know every time I have an issue and, and a citizen calls me and I don't know the answer, and I call you, you call them immediately and give them the answers and try to help fix whatever it might be. And you do that in a very timely fashion. I never had to give it a second thought. And so I just want to thank you for everything you've done and wish you the absolute best as you go forward in the next chapter of your life.
Thank you.
Great. And I think Commissioner Keiger.
I believe Commissioner Chu is getting ready to say something.
I was, I was keying up, but didn't want to get ahead of anybody. But Jonathan, I always knew this day was coming. You've been around quite a while, you know. And I think Jonathan and I first met when I was on the school board. And that was in 20, well, 2000. So it's been, what, 22 years of working with Jonathan. And, you know, we had a good conversation the other day. And only thing that I can say to wrap up this is Cabarrus County is a much better place because of Jonathan Marshall. And I thank you for your service. Thank you for your commitment and all that knowledge that you've got. I don't know what we're going to find all of that now. But we'll, we know you, where we live. So don't forget. So we thank you, Jonathan. I do.
Jonathan, I'm newer to the board and you and I have had a few conversations. But I do want to say, the time you've spent with me in this past year or so, I do appreciate all your help and support. And I wish you the very, very best. Don't be a stranger. And thank you again for everything you've done. Thank you.
I got to tell you, this feels like an amicable breakup. There's literally nothing that I can say that will express our full gratitude. I think I'm supposed to be near the microphone, sorry. You, for this board, for previous boards, and for everybody that lives in this county, you have done a tremendous job. So we thank you for that. So in retirement, I hope your fishing lines are tight and I hope all your drives find the fairway. So thank you for all you've done.
That last hope is futile.
Thank you, sir.
I hope there's no alarm on this. I did get to say a number of things at the retirement reception, and I appreciate that, that the county put that on for me. And I was able to thank so many people, my family and friends, my coworkers, all the different elected boards I've worked with. Honestly, I think when I look at this Board of Commissioners and your predecessors, the thing that always stands out to me is the, is the spirit of collaboration with the school boards, with the community college, and with all the other elected officials in the county. It's just, it's been an incredible asset to me as an employee and to everyone else because you collaborate and cooperate so well. Tonight, sitting here, Lloyd Quay was just in the room, Louis Suthur is behind me. There are so many people who give so much time and, and so much of themselves to this county. And I've been able to witness that. And I believe Louis might have been on the very first planning board I worked with. And then ultimately, an elected official with Soil and Water. And then they're representatives of the school board. And I've had the great fortune to work with both school systems throughout this, this career. But mostly, and what I think about are all the people in this county, the citizens and property owners that I've gotten to work with. And I think I said it Friday, from north to south, east to west, I even managed to take, do a couple stints as the Special Commissioner for resur surveying of county lines. Not something I would recommend to anyone, but it does get you out and meet people. And, and throughout my career, whether it was working on long-range plans or working on other projects, I've been able to get out all throughout this community and meet people. To the point that both Mike and I can drive folks crazy by wandering around the county and pointing at a piece of land and remembering a zoning violation, or a proposal for that property, or more importantly, who lives there and why that land is so important to them. Because ultimately, what you learn as a land use planner is land and community are so important to people. And you have to remember that to, to really respond to their needs. So I am extremely grateful to this county, to this county board, to the citizens. That, I will not do the toast tonight because I don't think you all have the appropriate beverages. But I will say that I finished on Friday by saying that I moved to North Carolina with my family in 1975, and I've never left North Carolina. That working for Cabarrus County and working for the state and working for the citizens has been in a very small way, my way of giving back to the place that's given me so much. And so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's important for us to remember, as I've said at some of our service award recognitions, commissioners come and go, but it's people like Jonathan that stay for the long haul that really cause things to happen. And we sincerely appreciate it. Okay, now we move to informal public comments. I have six cards. The clerk numbers these in the order that they are turned in. I'll call out your name. Each person has three minutes to make their comments. If the alarm goes off, we ask you to wrap it up with that sentence. And if not, then, then we'll ask again. But our first speaker is Jim Quick.
I have no idea how I pulled the lucky draw to follow that. What a, what a great man. I wanted to come here and talk about COVID-19. 704 long days ago, we entered into a crisis here in Cabarrus County. Chairman Morris signed the declaration. And it's been a long journey. I think we all know friends, family, relatives, neighbors who we've lost or, or have been sick because of the pandemic. And so I want to thank all of you for navigating us through this journey. You, staff, or municipalities have done a tremendous job of distributing funds and helping us stay afloat and continue us to move forward. But I have to ask, when is it going to end? I looked at the municipal guidelines, and it's kind of unclear in regards to how all of this ends in regards to a state of emergency. California, I don't think that's any conservative bastion, this month ended their statewide declaration and moved into an endemic. And so it got me looking. I looked at the website. I've looked at videos from different work sessions and these sessions. I've looked at videos from different work sessions and these sessions. And I can't find a dashboard that would guide this body as to ending the pandemic. And so I encourage you, I'm sure one exists, but it's not out there for us to look at. So Chairman Morris, it looks like, I think from the county ordinance, you have the ability to end it. And so I encourage you to end it. And same, people say, well, why would we end the pandemic? Why would we end the crisis? So when I look at other counties, certainly we see counties working together, just like our county has, to end the pandemic. But in one county, Union County, I saw members of the delegation for the State Assembly, their county commissioners, their school board, their Board of Health, all working to get kids unmasked and unquarantined and in school. And here at Cabarrus County, I think most of our county leaders have been working hard together to make that happen as well. Specifically, our school board has worked tremendously hard. But there's one person at the Public Health Department that's been standing in the way of making that happen. And it looks like some of that power comes from the emergency declaration and some of it comes from the structure of CHA. So tonight, you're going to see lots of people talking about this. But I encourage this board to take a look at that structure. I know years ago, it was probably established for some particular reason. But it seems like we have one person in our county that's taking action. And there's no accountability to the citizens, to the voters, even to you in regards to what actions they take. And it's, the bill is coming to each of you because our kids have been out of the classroom. They have really been hurt during education. And I think that's going to require extra funding. And so that really is important for you to take a look at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kenny Wortman.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Wortman. Started off as just a parent looking for, to make something right that happened to their kid at a public school. So what started off is, is one person is now growing to over almost 1,000. And I know that I emailed all of you. And we started showing up. And members of the school board are here that can attest that we're just going to keep showing up and our numbers are going to grow. Mr. Quick was nice enough not to name the name. I'm going to name it. Bonnie Coyle with the CHA is making decisions for our schools. She's not one of our elected officials. All of y'all are. And it's time that you hold her accountable. So our county wasn't under a mandate. But all of you sat there and you were silent when the CHA were cramming it down our kids' throats. Some of you sit on boards. You either show up, you don't show up. You don't make a decision. And your silence is definite. And we noticed it and we see it. So we're going to ask for you guys to bring the CHA back under your umbrella so that you, as our elected officials that we actually vote for, not Bonnie Coyle, can hold them accountable and so that we can in turn hold you accountable as well. I find it ironic that our fair was canceled out of fear, but yet the Gem Theater was still open. I don't understand how you make a decision like that. It's an outside event that hurt our economy. It hurt the kids that were looking forward to it. But yet you canceled it. But we can have private events there at that location as long as it's private, but our fair can't be there. So we have a school board liaison, Commissioner Kiger, who we've asked the school board. Couple of them said they've seen you once. One of them doesn't even know what you look like. For serving on the board at one point in time, I would think that you can understand that a budget meeting is not the same as actually showing up and being there. Commissioner Strang showed up to a couple of them. We've seen her there. We need your help. And we're not going to stop until we get it. It's that simple. We're not going to stop until we make that happen. Because while our school board can attempt to vote optional masking, it's up to Bonnie Coyle at the end of the day. And we're going to make sure to hold you guys accountable until that happens. Like.
Our next speaker is Stephanie Bloxum.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm asking the commissioners to begin the process of pulling the Cabarrus Health Alliance back under your umbrella. In 1997, the Health Alliance was removed under the commissioners to allow them to go out and get more money and more grants that could be available. But once the pandemic hit, it kind of put it under a microscope and it actually exposed how vulnerable that put the citizens. It put us in an extremely vulnerable situation. Mr. Morris, I've heard you tell people, I have no control over what Bonnie Coyle does. But do you not sit on the board that placed her? Do you not sit on the board that approves and votes on agendas with her? In August 2021, during a Cabarrus Health Alliance meeting, the Health Alliance discovered that they have no authority to put the county back under a mask mandate. And I've heard that there was trying to be a backdoor deal to get the mayors to agree to put the county back under. But they knew that it was wrong, so it didn't happen. You were present at that meeting and you know firsthand that it shouldn't have been done. What about the meeting in January where a motion was passed unanimously? Either mask the kids or take away our test to stay program? You were not present at that meeting, but not one person asked why it could be legally done in January, but they just decided that it couldn't have been done back five months earlier. A couple of parts in the split papers in 1997. Items of business do not need to be approved by the county commissioners and funding is not presented to them. These freedoms allow both Cabarrus Health Alliance and the CEO or Director of Operations to more freely and be able to respond public health issues in a more timely and appropriate manner. I find it interesting that they use the word freedom in there. Another part, the director hoped to allow each leader the authority to make decisions for each program or department without the necessity of going through layers and layers of approval. My personal opinion, the only thing in government that we should move layer and layer of approval is for our veterans, helping them get help faster. But putting our kids in masks for hours and hours and hours, I would hope that there are layers and layers of approval for that to happen. One last part in the papers. If CHA and the board and county commissioners desire to continue leading the state in quality public health programs, they may want to consider increasing the per capita allotment. So if I understand that correctly, they want a lot of money, but they want to do whatever they want to do. Bottom line, you guys were outworked and outclassed by surrounding counties and their commissioners. Ultimately, they showed me how hands-off you guys became, especially near the end of the pandemic. Mr. Kiger, please resign from being the school liaison. You're not helping us. And how could you? You sent your kids to private school. You have no temperature on what's going on in public schools. Please resign and let somebody else take over if you're not going to be the warrior in the seat we need you to be. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jerry Anderson.
Well, last month, we were celebrating Black Month and y'all took my granddaughter. She was black. Today, we're celebrating DHS, I guess, or something like that. And they were very wrong taking my child. Took her on emergency. And you know this, Mike Downs. Took her on an emergency order. And all that was happening was she was watching Disney at my house. That's all that was happening. But anyway, why would a veteran want to live here? I bought a house here. Why would a veteran want to live here? When I first came here, I came here, I had a transplant from service. And I was stopped by a Cabarrus cop named Sergeant Clutz on my birthday. Gave me a ticket, lights beaming in the dark. Gave me a ticket, gave me another. And I said, man, what you doing? You're wrong. You're going to jail if you say anything else. This officer Clutz. And gave me a third ticket. And my son said, and then he threatened my son. Anyway, I've never had a ticket before in my life. Never done anything wrong. So I go uptown on my birthday and I find, I'm going to the police office to tell them, this man is crazy. And got up there and this police officer sitting on the side of the street and I confronted him. He said, I know about it. Give it to me. He took all three of my tickets and I never heard nothing else again. Nothing else again. No apologies, no nothing. That was on May 19th of 2005 or 2007. I've been here a while. And then they come to my house on April 9th and took my granddaughter when I went up there to DHS and asking for help with my mental child. And they talking about they do so good for mental. And Jessica Downs, Jessica Bridges, she was an experienced caseworker, had my case because I asked her for help. And she didn't see fit to take my child. And then two social workers that come after her. My daughter didn't get along with her because she was mental. And she told them, her child didn't like being around them because they didn't, she didn't know what gender they were. And coming over there, putting their hands all over my child. And they got, they got a bad case that my daughter didn't know, didn't know that she was mental. They took my child on emergency take where my child was watching Disney. Like I say, been in school and all that time. They did an investigation and yes, man, right there. He don't care about the mill people here in Cabarrus County. He's from Texas. Anyway, he, he's got, he's got some answers.
Thank you.
Third time too. I don't have time in three minutes. Third time where they say they made mistakes over and over at your department. So still giving them a reward, we're going to be giving them the finger.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Rory.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Rory. I'm a parent of two Cabarrus County children. About a year ago, we were tired of masks. We didn't know what was going on. I started researching. And like all our people that talked tonight, we have had, we've uncovered some very concerning laws and regulations and ordinances. And when I started this about a year ago, about the researching, I found, I came across Moms for Liberty. It's a organization of parents and concerned community members. And they are concerned and they work towards parents' rights and children's schools. And I can say this. You've got a lot of concerned parents and it is growing daily. And it's only taken off. The COVID circumstances did have a silver lining. It revealed that there's a very, very dangerous disconnect between the parents and the school administration, including this administration. It revealed some loopholes in our local government that needs to be resolved and resolved quickly. Our government is a system of checks and balances. But yet we have checks and balances that we found that were missing in this system. Our local community has got three things that we need. We need, number one, we need an option of having a recall on committee, school board members and county commissioners. There has been recently many times where we've had unprofessional, unethical, and possibly illegal behavior of elected officials at the local level, including the school board and county commissioners. We need a possible, I mean, excuse me, we do need a recall for elected officials to be, so that we can have them held accountable and should have to process removing them if the community votes this way. Number two, we need a revision on emergency powers. This county was under emergency orders for far too long. And no one was held accountable for doing this to our community. We need time limits and voting processes added to the emergency use power. We had our Cabarrus County Fair canceled and this community will never forget. I cannot tell you how many people reached out and said, how come our Cabarrus County Fair was canceled? And nobody had any answers. Number three, CHA, otherwise known as Cabarrus Health Alliance, has been talked about here tonight. This is apparently the be-all, end-all of power. We kept trying to get masks considered at school board meetings. We went over and over and over and over and over for almost a year, asking why are the children masked? Why is this, what's the big holdup? We have these checks and balances and we got to meet these numbers, metrics, and all this. And nobody could tell us what was really going on. And apparently, we were beating our heads over the wall. There was a person behind all this that was holding us accountable as they talked about tonight. We need responsibility and we need these laws and ordinances changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeter Anderson.
Jeter Anderson. Tonight, people are asking a lot about accountability. Y'all ain't going to get none from them. Just like y'all said, they're silent and will remain silent. And lucky if we see them at all. How you doing, Richard Cook? It's good to see you up here. I'm glad you helped Mr. Quay. You didn't do so good for me. I know you got a mental, or not a mental, a health problem. You told me so. You know, maybe it affected this investigation. Mike Downs, you run this investigation for this veteran. And you disrespect them? You want to lock the doors on them? You have an open door policy. You changed your own darn policy and disrespected this veteran. You disrespect veterans. You do not like veterans. How you did my dad was wrong. You should have affirmative veteran action. Let's not answer no questions about his daughter, Mike. That's not good. Since you've been here, been protests out there, been children taking away court building, building bigger. No accountability. No accountability whatsoever. These people want some kind of accountability, Mike. And it falls on you to get them something. And Richard, retire, man. You need help getting up here. Let somebody younger get up here. Don't have them old and gotta help them. We allowed Jay White up here. Yes, I'm going to talk about it. We allowed Jay White's ethics. He hurt my sister. He prosecuted her three times with no attorney. You can't do that to a mentally ill individual. What the heck is the kid going through? What y'all did, it was an organized crime. Your DSS department did an organized crime to take Jada Sue Anderson away from a mentally ill individual, to swindle her away. And you going to lock the doors and remain silent? Well, let's be quiet, Mike Downs. Why, on the street out here, you don't have to be quiet, people. You be as loud as you want. Why don't you come say their names and let them know? Let the people know. Y'all ain't doing something right. Everybody knows it.
Okay, that's all of the cards that we have for folks that have signed up for public comments tonight. So we will now move to our consent agenda. Commissioners, you all have a list of those items before you, which are all items that we have discussed at length during our work session two weeks ago. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes unanimously. And we move now to new business. First up, from Planning and Development, renaming of the Deferred Tax Collection Account. And we're happy to have Kelly Sifford with us for that item.
Thank you. As you all are aware, we have the Deferred Tax Collection Account that was created in, I believe it's 2008, at the request of Ned Hudson. He had done some research by traveling to another community and learned about this as an opportunity to create some funding that was not taxpayer dollars. So over the years, that account has accumulated $4.1 million. It has been used to help purchase 508 acres of conservation easements, which farmer, many farmers use to support and continue and expand their businesses without a guarantee of the property never being developed. It's been used to purchase, help purchase the St. Stephen's 600-acre property for the park, along with local food and in particular, support of the Elma C. Lomax incubator farm. It is assisted with the purchase of the Suthur Prairie that we transferred to the state of North Carolina for protection and for seed growth or collection. They have a special set of flowers out there that we collect seeds off of every year and are used to market and sell and for leaf research as well. Tonight, we have Louis Suthur here to introduce the resolution regarding this.
Resolution regarding the renaming of the Deferred Tax Collection Account to the Hudson Conservation Account in honor of Ned Hudson. Conservation Account in honor of Ned Hudson's distinguished career in soil and water conservation. Whereas Cabarrus County has experienced tremendous growth over the past 50 years and has lost significant natural resources due to the development of raw land and farms. The Cabarrus County Soil and Water Conservation Board provides resources and education on conservation measures for Cabarrus County. And whereas Ned Hudson helped many, many roles in North Carolina Soil and Water Conservation Network, serving as a teacher for 33 years, a member of the Cabarrus County Soil and Water Conservation Board for 24 years, along with involvement in numerous other local, state boards and committees, and was recently inducted into the North Carolina Association of Soil and Water Conservation District Hall of Fame. And whereas in search of opportunities for conservation not funded through Cabarrus County General Fund, Ned Hudson learned of a system of using deferred tax fund derived from the sale of farms and that removed them from agriculture use and applied the proceeds toward the purchase of conservation easements that would protect land in perpetuity for agriculture or open space use. And whereas the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners adopted a resolution at request of Ned Hudson and the Cabarrus County Soil and Water Conservation Board on May 21, 2009 to establish a deferred tax collection account that has accumulated approximately $4.1 million since its inception and which has been used to help purchase 508 acres of conservation easement and over 600 acres of park property, along with supporting the local food network through new farmer training. And whereas Cabarrus County staff has recommended that the deferred tax collection account be renamed the Hudson Conservation Account in honor of the incredible productive career of Ned Hudson. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners rename the deferred tax collection account to the Hudson Conservation Account in honor of Ned Hudson's valuable work in this Cabarrus County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Louis served with Ned for many, many years on that board and we thought it'd be best to hear it from him. Unfortunately, Ned passed away in December, so he did not get to see his Hall of Fame induction or this, but we did want to take this time and recognize him.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do I, do I hear a motion to adopt the resolution as presented? We have a motion and a second. And I'll open the floor for discussion. I would start that off by saying that Mr. Hudson, and I think is, as is evidenced by what has been said here tonight, was extremely dedicated to preserving resources in Cabarrus County. He did tremendous work and I can think of, and I was not on the board when this fund was established, but I have certainly seen the benefits of it over the years. And I can think of no more appropriate way of taking deferred taxes that are collected on property that is being turned over for development, property that will no longer be farmed or no longer will be open space, and using those proceeds to try to protect other property. It works extremely well and I think that Cabarrus County will forever be indebted to Mr. Hudson for bringing that proposal before the board. And the properties that have been preserved and protected by that fund are ones that, as you said, in perpetuity, which is a hard word for me to pronounce, but we will enjoy that and our children and grandchildren will benefit from it. So, and on top of that, Mr. Hudson was just a super nice guy. Southern gentleman, cordial and friendly. And so I'm so happy that we have an opportunity to recognize him in this way. And does anyone else have comments?
Just real quickly, Mr. Chairman, since I'm the liaison to the Soil and Water Board, I got to work with Ned a little bit and got to know him. And to ditto what the chairman said, I can't think of a finer person anywhere, you know, him and always seeing Louis there until Louis give up. And then, of course, Ned went right down to the wire. He was dedicated and committed to soil and water. And he, just like Jonathan, made a difference in Cabarrus County. And this particular fund that we're talking about has been used greatly and will be used a lot more as the county grows. And so I for one appreciate what Ned done and I'm glad to see us do something in his recognition. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other discussions or comments? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, no. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And then we have one other item in new business, which is regarding some ARPA funds for weatherization. And I think Kelly Sifford is going to tell us about that. And you all have a printed packet at your place about that as well.
I am, and I wanted to make sure we're not skipping the solid waste item.
Well, you're right. I'm doing that right and left tonight. Yeah. So we will pause for a moment and we'll go back to the solid waste ordinance. And we are glad to have Kevin Grant with us to talk about that item.
Kelly, you weren't hurting my feelings if you stepped up. That was good. Good evening, everyone. The current agreement, the solid waste collection and disposal franchise agreement expires on December 31st of 2022. The agreement, the agreement includes the option for two five-year renewals. And Republic Services has expressed a desire to execute the first of these renewals. As discussed during the work session, just give a brief summary of what this agreement includes. Includes a residential trash and bulky waste and recycling collection for curbside collection for residents of unincorporated Cabarrus residents who suit, who so choose desire. It includes residential waste disposal at the Charlotte Motor Speedway landfill for Cabarrus County and for the municipalities of Kannapolis, Mount Pleasant, Midland and Harrisburg. City of Concord has their own host fee agreement with Republic Services concerning the Speedway landfill. Also includes set disposal rate for residential waste collected at the Cabarrus County CND landfill on Irish Potato Road and delivered for, like I said, a set tipping fee. This is for residents that if you don't want curbside collection or if you have bulk waste, extra waste that you need to get rid of, we have a residential waste convenience center at the construction and demolition landfill on Irish Potato Road. So we provide that service and then we take that material and we haul it down to the Charlotte Motor Speedway landfill. The agreement also includes a guarantee of space for disposal of residential waste at the Charlotte Motor Speedway landfill, which also includes the county, Kannapolis, Harrisburg, Mount Pleasant and Midland. And as we've said for probably the last couple of years, that airspace or the amount of space remaining to place residential waste or any type of waste at that landfill is starting to run out. Current calculations show about 10 years, so this guaranteed space is very crucial for us. So what we're requesting tonight is a motion to adopt the first reading of the ordinance acknowledging the renewal of the solid waste collection and disposal franchise agreement through December 31st of 2027. Any questions?
Questions for Kevin. And of course, we did discuss this at length at our work session two weeks ago as well, so quite a few questions were asked there and well answered, I would add. If there are no questions, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the first reading of the ordinance acknowledging the renewal of the solid waste collection and disposal, disposal franchise agreement through December 31st, 2027.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir. And I think we have to do this again next month, right?
We do, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, now we will move to the item that I jumped ahead on and we recognize Kelly Sifford.
Thank you. So you have not seen this item at the agenda session. This came in late. You have a hard copy. We figured that was the easiest way to address this quickly in front of you. This is a contract for the ARPA funds for weatherization, ARPA being the American Rescue Plan Act. They have divided the money and provided us with $62,313, or $249 as upfront money to start the process. They interestingly broke it into a couple of heating and air repair and replacements. And then the other idea is to ramp up labor for the upcoming funds. For this, we are just asking for you to approve the contract. We will bring the budget amendment back to you next month, so we won't be doing anything at all before that. We will proceed right away with heating and air repair and replacements. We have people that we can serve quickly. We will come back to you before we seek to add any staff to talk about that. They have not given us any indication whatsoever what the balance of that money looks like or how long the duration of that money is. So I am not comfortable requesting any additional positions or anything until we know that information. So the rest of us will kind of sit until we get some answers on that. And possibly be used for heating and air repair and replacements in the, if we choose not to add staff.
Thank you. And there were some deadlines on this that necessitated us adding it to the agenda tonight.
Yes, it is due back on Wednesday.
Right. Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Sifford? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to approve the weatherization contract, number CW 26074, for the first phase of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, which has been reviewed by Cabarrus County's legal staff. We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that concludes our new business, unless I've skipped over something else, which I don't think I have. But, so we'll move now to reports. First up, we receive, we will receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards or committees. Does anyone have anything tonight?
I do.
Okay.
From the Senior Advisory Committee, they have two things they wanted me to point out tonight. The Senior Health and Wellness Expo at the arena will be Wednesday, March 9th, from 10:30 to 2:00. There will be free health screenings, educational sessions, exhibitors, healthy food, door prizes and medication disposal. It's been canceled the previous two years and it is back on for this year. It is a free event and they would love to see you there. The next is the Cabarrus Senior Games are beginning March 15th this year. They are held each spring and you can sign up and get an early bird discount between now and March 1st. And then it's only $15 if you register after the deadline, I believe. And the deadline is March 14th. And you must be 50 years of age to participate and there are different opportunities to compete, 5K run, archery, basketball shooting, bocce ball, bowling, cornhole, cycling, golf tournament, miniature golf, pickleball, shuffleboard, silver arts, follies, tennis and track events and much more. So contact the Active Living and Parks Department and you can find them on the website as well as the phone number for more information or if you would like to sign up.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports?
Mr. Chairman, I have one from the town of Harrisburg. The Public Works Department received the prestigious OSHA Public Sector Sharp Recognition Award on Friday, February the 11th. North Carolina Commissioner of Labor, Josh Dobson, presented the Sharp Award at a banquet which was hosted at Cabarrus Country Club. And I'd like to read a quick statement from Harrisburg's new mayor, Jennifer Teague. "The town of Harrisburg is so proud of our Public Works Department. The OSHA Public Sector Sharp Award is a huge accomplishment and we are thankful for everyone that contributed to this process." So that's good news and congratulations to the Public Works Department in Harrisburg.
Thank you. Congratulations, Harrisburg. And I think we have one of our Harrisburg councilmen with us tonight, so please take that back. Okay, any other reports? Okay, I will mention, as we frequently do, a request for applications for various county boards and committees. We have a list of those on our website. As I mentioned at our work session two weeks ago, I think we have somewhere around 30 to 35 different boards that the Board of Commissioners appoints volunteers to serve on. So we always appreciate receiving those applications and just as we have recognized several individuals tonight that have very long service to the citizens of the county by serving on some of those boards. In addition to that, we have about 30 different boards that commission members are assigned to serve on. So if, for anyone that may be observing and think that our monthly meetings that we have twice a month are the extent of the meetings we attend, that is not true. There are quite a few, quite a few others. So it keeps us busy, but we very much appreciate citizens that are willing to step up and serve on some of those committees. And I will go now to general comments by board members, if anyone has anything they would like to share.
I have one quick comment. For the record, I'd like to state that my daughter graduated from Hickory Ridge High School in 2013, which I do believe is a Cabarrus County public school.
Right.
So, just for that information.
Okay, any other general comments? Hearing none. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And we are now in closed session. Thank you all who joined us tonight in person, as well as those viewing at home.